It was fun with your Southeast Cass.
Southeast Cass. Because when, when we looked into trying to drop them out of, out of our, get them out of our hair a few years back.
Did they go well?
We found out that, that we can't.
Okay.
Un- undo that. But I think we wanna look real serio- I don't, I don't know if the line is capable of it. But I think we wanna think really long and hard before we wanna bring any more people outside of the city. Into our sewer system.
Okay, fair.
Thanks, this is just very preliminary.
Yeah.
Not, nothing has been done with it, it's just the.
It was, it was a conversation that probably started here about what, three weeks ago or something?
Yeah, yeah, and, and once, once they started to get more development out there and that, their holding tanks started filling up monthly. And they, they realizing that there's a, already a piping two Horace that goes through their driveway, it kinda got them thinking.
Yeah.
How are they filling it up?
Uh, just with all the businesses over there in industry. So, well, that's, all I can tell you is what they told me, I mean.
There's gotta be more action.
I don't know.
There's gotta be more action going on over there than what it appears.
Yeah.
Oh, there were some parties.
One good Friday night, you gotta load it up, man.
Yep, and then, uh, the last thing I have is we did send out those surveys that Matea talked about in the last meeting. They were sent out last week and there's been a link put on the website to the areas. Uh, potentially being serviced by sixty-fourth Avenue lift station, we've got three back, a yes, a no, and a maybe.
I got mine today.
I just got mine today.
So, um, fill it out online or send it back.
You sent it to my right address, but somehow the names were two different people in our.
Oh, the mail merge got off?
Yeah, it, it said my last name properly, but it was a David and Michelle, which there is a David and Michelle.
Oh, really?
What did you get back?
At least it didn't say Fran and Austin.
I got back a yes from Sunnyside, a no from, um, what I would call the, uh, I think it's Sha- Shadow Lane. Yep, and then a maybe from Greyhawk, those three. And that's just what I received back through the Civic Plus on the website.
And the side that could be is from Shadow Lane, it depends on which side of the road they are, because if they're a brand new house, they just invested.
That's what the comment was, when we. This wasn't an option in two thousand and whatever, when they built, we spent twenty thousand dollars and maybe in the future we wanna do it, but.
Yeah.
It's, uh, not really what they were.
I'm, I'm assuming from all people in my development, it'll be generally no.
Okay.
Because we're all within fifteen years of.
And like I say, we're just trying to gauge interest, we don't, there's not a plan out there to do it, it's just, if there, if there's interest, we'll look into it more, if there's not, we're not gonna waste time.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I had a, I had a resident ask me that, how long, I mean, before we'll have to, I said, probably five, seven years.
I think if the option is a mound system, people will be more receptive to a municipal.
Well, somebody in our development did a big huge addition on their house, they had to put a mound system, but it's in their backyard and I can't see it, but I don't know, some of those look. Some of them dream fields are looking pretty tall, what they have to put in.
Yeah, but the thing is, you look at, not to get along discussion, but you look where, not to call your development out, but you've got development that's open on the west. So, that's where opportunity.
When that counts, that would be perfect.
Some of these other developments are tied in.
Yeah.
You know, between.
Right.
Where the opportunity in there a little older.
Right.
Where the more opportunities.
But that's why I say in our development, you start developing that field, perfect time.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So, right now, Jim, what I'd do for those guys, uh, KPH bud starter, I'd say that we had a conversation about it.
Yep.
But that's about where it ended.
Okay.
And I'd say, let's get, let's see what they say after that meeting.
Yeah.
I'm curious to see what Fargo wants to do, I have a feeling I know, but.
Well, I'd like to understand too, the capacity, I mean.
Right, yeah.
The current line, fully a capacity or not?
Right, and, and that's something that we, we would definitely look at before, we would say that we can bring it on there, so. Uh, one item of note is, we did have a public information meeting at six o'clock for the sewer connection at a hundredth Avenue. And a lot of participation, a couple of people here, Cory, Lucas, me. I will leave, I will leave, uh, comment cards with Matea for public to provide comments on. Any, and my information is on here if need be, but, uh, it's kind of a straightforward project, the area south of a hundredth Avenue requested service. And they're going to develop that this summer, this is a project that installs a lift station for that area and a force main back to the existing system, so.
What's your boundary for, the boundary for, quote, the improvement district is?
Large.
Large?
Yes, because this lift station will be sized, this lift station will be sized to accommodate as much as we can get to it. To try to limit the number of lift stations we have down there, if we would put one in for every little subdivision, we'd have a ton.
Right, but I mean.
Yep.
Nobody showed up, so did we send individ- have we sent individual letters to like Country Acres or anything like that?
We, we have not petitioned Country Acres, um, to see if they wanted it, uh, the general rule that I had gotten from them was they weren't really proposed, or weren't really.
Interested.
Interested in it at the time, um, and then the council saying we weren't gonna force it on anyone, so. Uh, but the assessment district is large, but not everyone there would be assessed, we would go through the benefits and stuff, but you can always make a district smaller, you just can't make it bigger.
Right, so that's why you.
That's why, that's why it encompasses that area.
What did you say the cost was, was less than a?
Uh, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred thousand roughly.
So, can I just ask a basic question, if, the benefit truly is this development out of the gate, would the city worth it just assessing that development?
It's not just the one development, Visto's could also potentially connect to it.
Visto's.
So, at least a cu- a couple of it.
Yes.
I mean, would we look at just those specific?
We could.
As an option.
I would, it's just, uh, uh, it's probably gonna end up getting done with percentages, and then so, some of those bigger egg parcels will just get a percentage and it'll be a small percentage.
There, there might be a landlord along here who's waiting for this, and once it happens, they're gonna pull.
Right.
Or, or start right away.
That's what I'm guessing is gonna happen, once this gets more known that this is coming.
Initiate it, and the one thing that we're, we're always aware of is somebody wanting to wait a year, thinking they'll miss a special, because they aren't directly using it. By that, so, there will be, have to be provisions in there.
Right, there'll be provisions when you come back and get, and, you know, for new developments or something.
All right, with that chaos, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the next thing that's on the list here is the backup inspection proposal from Morgan Engineering.
John, diligently set.
Yeah, sorry, man, sorry, um, yeah, so, what precipitated this was, um. We had a little deal that went on back in December and came down to we needed an inspection done and it wasn't, we weren't able to do it. You know, just things happen, um, so, what we were trying to do is figure out, okay, so, as we move forward as a city here. We should probably start thinking about having backups, Vance, Matea can back each other up, the boys can back each other up, Perry doesn't have a backup. If he wants to take a two or three vacation right now, we're stuck, so, um. Brian and I met with more engineering back at the end of January, we kinda talked about this a little bit, if they would be interested in doing something like that on an as-need basis. So, if we get stuck in a situation like that again, then we would be able to have assistance and get some help, um. So, um, we sat down with them, they came up with a proposal, I sent you guys a proposal, it was a long one that had everything in it, but what the gist of this. This conversation is about is to, um, enter into some arrangement with more engineering to provide, uh, a backup. Plan for us for inspections, so, um, am I missing anything on that, or?
I haven't been involved in any of the docs, but that's why they sent me down there.
Good.
No, it's nobody else.
Yeah. But that was, that was the gist of the conversation, so that was part of the emails that got sent out, yeah.
How do we handle commercial inspections now? Uh, for the school, didn't he ask, or ask West Fargo to assist on that one?
West Fargo.
The, West Fargo inspections, which I think in the end is, is what, is it more interesting, he does West Fargo inspections?
Yeah, so I'm guess, I'm guessing that's what happened.
So, like, for that, I know Perry has reached out for something that.
He did.
Yeah.
Was he the cashier at the school?
Mm-hmm.
Well, not just the addition of the school, the new ones.
Well, yeah, right.
Right.
We would do the same thing again.
Because we're incapable of that.
Right.
But that's why I figured too, if we enter in some arrangement right now, then the stuff is already handled, so when we need to have assistance, it's just. Phone call away essentially, to get some help with this, so, um. And Jim, you and I talked about this, and he was involved with what went on in December, so he understands what this was about, so. Um, you guys are, and the thing is too, with more is being their local posts here, they're familiar with what we're doing, our ordinances are very similar. So, um, that's what, this, that's what this discussion was about tonight, so, that's why I brought it up.
So, I know that you and I have talked, and as you said, you've discussed this with Jim, and it's just there, you know, our first option would be go to.
Yep.
Art's current city engineer, but your resources in Wapton would just be far away.
Building officials not really are.
Right, so. So, to have a backup through interstate is not potentially possible, it'd have to be fully planned and that, so something different.
We did have a discussion about this a couple of years ago, briefly, and the one resource was a gentleman that I believe Damien referred to.
Yep.
In Wapton.
Yep.
But again, you're looking at distance and we, we know how things happen.
Yeah.
You, you can't delay somebody's dream of closing down their house, because we don't have ability to get an inspection done.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and that would've been an awful deal too, because it would've, the situation was that they're, they're, that's when their arrangement with. Being locked in on an interest rate would've been done, and they would've had to lock in at a higher interest rate, then go through the whole effort and process again. So, it's just one of those things, we shouldn't have, Perry should be able to take off a couple of weeks if he wants to and not worry about what's going on around here. Okay, right now, he doesn't have that type of capability, because we need him all the time. So, um, that's why I'm.
Definitely need a backup line.
Yeah, I mean, just everybody should have a backup, just business continuity.
I, I did read through the contract and the number of details, that kinda stuff, but the basis of that contract truly was just. We just stated that the, the services we're looking for is inspections, building inspections.
As, as needed, yep.
I know, I had a lot of other.
And extra stuff, yep.
Generally.
And Steve and I talked about that, that's just, this was probably just more, more information than we necessarily needed, but just let you guys know what was going on.
So, do we need some type of motion or approval or anything like that, can we get that forward, or what's the process then?
Yeah, a motion to approve the agreement.
Basically, what we can do though is, I think, um, I'll, I'll talk with Steve, that we should probably narrow down that agreement to just be on inspections. Or do we wanna just make a note in there on that, on the proposal that they sent? Sharon was concerned about that, that it didn't say as needed and what she saw in there, and that was why I was just gonna say, you know, do we need to do a little bit? Would you guys feel more comfortable?
Just approve it as amended, and I'm just add that.
Yes, I would, I would, I, you know, I wanted to just be clear enough to the.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just. I wanna make sure everybody's comfortable with this, 'cause I know, kind of, we're stepping out of a little boundary here, but I wanna make sure.
Yep.
So, whatever changes you guys need to make.
Yep.
So, you just do a motion to approve the agreement with the provisions?
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with provisions to denote or notate.
To limit to building inspections.
To building inspections only.
Okay.
Inspection services, let's put it that way, whatever those.
Does that sound?
We're not missing anything.
Yeah, I wanna make sure we're not missing something, so.
How does that work with issuing documents, you know, the problem we had at, at the end of the year was issuing the certificate of occupancy, how does that work if it's?
Is that hand in hand, or is that just automatic?
What I was wondering, and one of the things we had issue with at that time was, was anybody willing to stand on Perry's inspections up to date? That was one question that had was.
That is a tough one.
Yep.
We've done it for Harwood, but I created a certificate of occupancy for them to sign, 'cause I said, I won't. 'Cause I said, if we're only doing two inspections, I'm not gonna be able to keep it all right, and that's just a, just not be.
And that's, that's a problem that we could potentially.
Yeah.
Or the likely did it, because a construction job takes how long, and Perry's gone at one section of it. Are we gonna ask you to sign off on the whole thing at the end?
Yeah, which wouldn't be fair, because you haven't been a part of that, and I know that's the, that was, there's this couple scenarios here where it's gonna be a situation.
If something was missed, whoever, and, and we caught something differently and all of a sudden, but then you could have another problem where. All right, say it was a final inspection, you found something that's, no.
Right.
Cannot do that, that's gotta be changed, you, you could have it both bad and both ways, homeowner and all of us could be screwed on the closing.
Yeah.
On it, but that's where we ran into, we've done it for other communities, we could cast on Kinder, Mapleton, Oxmo. For that, we'd take care of the totally, Harwood, we did one house, where they wanted four inspections, so we created a contract for it. And I said, I will not do the CO, but the city can do it if they choose, and they have the authority to decide if we just get a CO.
But then it goes back through, the city can sign a CO at the end.
Right.
So, then we're, we're kinda chasing our tail on it.
Yeah, but that was a situation we ran into, I mean, again, it's nothing, nothing's really.
Well, I know this is gonna be, there's always gonna be an exception, so we can't, we can't stop ourselves.
No, but that, that's.
No, no, just, just.
Let me, let me finish, we can't, we can't stop ourselves from making a decision to not have a backup, because these are gonna be exceptions, we always are gonna have exceptions.
So, to me, the side of it is, let's figure out the way to have the backup, knowing there are gonna be exceptions, we're gonna have to deal with it. And for the long term, we as a city have to figure out a better plan to this, whether that's in nine months, having a assistant inspector or something, or whatever. Or, or a true defined better contractor, or something, I don't know, I don't know, we're gonna need something better for this in the long term.
Not to be argumentative, Dave, but will you sign a CO that you did do all the inspections on?
That I didn't do?
Right.
No.
Then your backup plan is worthless.
That, that's what happened.
That's our problem, so this backup plan.
Okay, so.
We need, we need to solve a backup plan before we come into a agreement.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get it done tonight, or even anytime soon.
No, I don't, I think there is a conversation, how can we solve this, let's.
Because you just made the statement, a CO will not be assigned by anybody but somebody in the city.
But can we put language in there that?
Can we have temporary COs that they assign the final beam from the city or something, or I don't know, but that to me, you're going backwards.
Problem with that one is the banks won't always accept the temporary COs.
Right, that's, that's what we ran into last time.
But, but, but is there a checkoff that we would have, that Van, our city administrator would have? Okay, we have X amount of inspections, they're each checked off by Perry, and then you get to the final one. If you saw the signatures on it by the city Horace Inspector, would you sign a CO?
But, but that where it comes to, Perry's already working for you and as a city employee, you could have anybody that works for the city sign that CO. Uh, so, I mean, so if your city administrator, uh, whoever, they could sign it, it's just the fact that, you know. Me or one of my employees didn't see it, it's hard for us, for me to do it, and this comes all the way back to Kinder, where. If we are not under contract, if something happens, and out there it happened where we didn't do anything, we ended up being at fault. You had to pay the homeowner for something that never should've even happened in the first place.
Well, liability.
It's, it's, we don't want.
Reliability.
Yeah, we, we don't want you to get stuck, and we don't want you to get stuck.
And that's where that comes down to, it's, it's a hard thing, but same thing in Fargo, anybody else would say, they would not do it. It was like, we didn't see it, because they're under, they've been trained, this is what they are accustomed to seeing, but then, when you don't know what it is. I'm not saying anything against Perry, it's just, you're kind of up in the air.
Well, the hard part is we're getting so much of it now, is, is, our growth is maybe dictating a different plan that we need to come up with.
That's what I mean, we might have to, Russ, you have something, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Actually, I, I wanna point out that we lost our last city administrator. Basically. Quickly over, overnight kind of thing.
Right.
Well, in the hospital. Maybe the zoning administrator position, maybe we need to have a discussion, maybe the zoning administrator position has nothing to do with inspections. And we go to contract inspections in total.
Split the assignments.
So, you sit, sit again?
So, the zoning administrator is a zoning administrator, but not an inspector.
But he's not a zoning administrator, his job position is an inspector, it says in our financials, it says that right, that's what his, he's, we added. Zoning administrator to quote-unquote his duties.
He's the code inspector, eh?
Right, he's more of a building inspector than a zoning administrator, he does both, but quote-unquote by the job description per se. He's more of a building inspector, that is actually more of his job than the zoning, but I understand what you're stating, that's the tough thing.
Uh.
No, it's just another option, something to think about anyway.
These, these are, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, we are, we have way too much going on. To have everything. In one single person.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Agreed, no, I'm about to agree, we just went through that, I mean, that's, agreed, that's, that's what the situation is here that we're at, so.
Is there something for communication between the homeowner, the builder, or whatever, say, we'd like to do it this day, so you don't have that last minute deal? I mean, I, I under.
Perfect world.
That might be utopia.
Laugh at me, I know, I know, silly, silly.
It happens on a daily basis.
I believe it, I do.
We'll get a phone call three o'clock, if we're closing at five, we need a final, it's like, sorry. You knew a month in advance that you're closing.
Sure.
And you call us on the last two hours.
Yeah, I know.
You say no, right? You guys do say no, right?
No, we don't, I said, if you gotta, I guess you're gonna be paying some extra money, 'cause there's no possible way we can do that.
Right, right, but you're saying, we can't get out there to do this, no, there's no way.
And you can do it if you can, you can at that late hour.
I mean.
No, I, I.
In the morning, they'll say, we're gonna close again today, and I said, like, city ma- uh, more head, Fargo, they've got fairly large staff. Where they can call in, type the CO up, get it to whoever, sign it, get it out, we can't do it. Uh, we just don't have, I've got six people, and when it's busy, none of them in the office except for my administrative assistant. Art could handle most of my commercial, all my inspectors are gone, you might be in the office for two hours, and I can't. You know, and we did the same thing, well, we're, we're closing, I, I said, you've gotta give us a couple of days. For this, because this is insane, I said, it's, we're not a small town.
Are, are you, are you able to take on what we have? I'm, I'm sorry, that's kinda, I hear the.
West Fargo is getting built out, and we take on other small cities, but it's, we're on a downward trend in West Fargo. And Fargo too, we're running out of land, but that's the way building is going.
We'd have a contract anyway, so.
So, yes, I'd go ahead and say that, yes.
Timeframe of when, I don't have a problem with telling builders, homeowners, from the time you call. I need forty-eight hours, or twenty-four hours, or whatever you're asking, but I also expect you to meet those deadlines.
For the most part, in West Fargo right now, we're at pretty much every inspection with them, and that's me, my dad, and a lot of them there. But, uh, to get there, but we wanna work with everybody to get it done, and sometimes if it's not on concrete stuff, we tell them, you want, I want forty-eight dollars. But these guys seem to tell me that they can't work, they can order concrete fifty.
They, they got the truck sitting right there, waiting for you to sign.
Yeah.
But, on our defense, we've spent the last few years being hard on them, 'cause as soon as they port it, and we're not there. All I tell them is, now we better get the builder involved, because we're done doing inspection, because I have no idea what else is in there, because. And there is contractors out there, they'll pull rebar, they'll do something, and they think it's our issue, and that's the problem. They have, but as soon as you do that, when they realize that's gonna screw up the rest of their, their days for closing, they will get in line very fast. But we go through it, I mean, every, all the other time, same way, we treat them the exact same, so they know us, but this calling at ten o'clock, they'll port at ten thirty.
Yeah.
Cancel the truck.
Cancel the truck.
Or, I mean, if they do go in and port it, but that's when we pull up. Then you're gonna have to hire a store contractor to scan it, port it, or whatever it may be, that's our dumb, or our backfall issues again. And you're gonna pay money, 'cause that's, that's the only way it's right for the people to find the house and the city.
What should be gross too, but I know, you know, I'll try and bend over, it's the, I would've nice, and it's like, you didn't give us enough. Do the timeframe, and I'm sorry, just being too nice in certain situations.
Play essentially, yeah, we have the, yeah, or to do it, but yes, you could have potentially a lot of complications in the next three years.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
That's.
And what I said, one person is tough.
Well, when you have multi-people who can move around and take care of things.
'Cause I got a, as we get residential, HPAC inspector, commercial, we had two residential inspectors and then one left, and we've been. Good enough to keep just one busy, what it is busy.
So, I guess that's my other question, is what, is what inspections do we do as a city, do we only do framing? It's like, when I built twelve years ago, it was, it was, um, plumber was from the state, and electrical for it was from the state.
Yes, and that is still.
They're still.
Okay.
Getting except Fargo, everyone's got stuff.
Right.
By the way, you're putting foundation, floor quality.
Okay.
HPAC, we do about ten and above inspections per month.
Insulation, yeah.
All.
How, how many, how many inspections are there, real quick, if you're going to do that twelve?
Ten to twelve, depending on complexity of the HPAC, or how ready the house is, you can have three, three HPAC inspections at the most. But then by the time you get corrections here and there, there is, I say ten to twelve.
Bottomly, we have to have a backup plan.
Right.
But what is the right solution?
You're not gonna find an exact one right now.
You're not.
You're not, it's gonna take more work for us to come up with, and I don't think there's enough time today for, either you and I, or whoever, we need. That city industry to help us come in and get this going on something.
I think we need to seriously think about how we are gonna handle inspections.
Yeah.
Overall, and it, you're talking a backup plan, but a backup plan turns into a permanent.
Yep.
How does that proposal change, so we would be prepared for it, I, I think we may, maybe need a little bit more scenario option.
Do you wanna talk about, I mean, okay, so we have some more conversation about it, I mean, that's fine, I'm just, just so we know.
That's where, I, I want this done, right, 'cause I.
That's what I was, I mean, there's questions.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I want you guys to feel comfortable with the two, so that we can come, you know, again, we've got scenarios, we know we're gonna hit that kinda thing, but it just be so that when we do run into a situation. We have a fallback position to work with, 'cause right now, I don't have that.
Yep.
So, okay, so let's have, we'll have some more conversation about this, and then we'll stay in touch, how's that?
Not a problem, just hold the speed.
Yeah, yeah.
Under for that, and, uh, I'll leave a couple of business characters, you can call if there's other questions about processes or whatever you may have.
Yep.
You can only do that.
Okay, let's just, let's just do that then, and we'll just stay in touch, and we'll have these conversations and see what, and.
Walter, things that you guys see that we're missing, that's, anything that we're not taking into account.
I guess, I have no idea what his processes are on it, but I mean, like I said, it's an easy, at best eight inspections to twelve inspections. You know, with what's there, and then getting the paperwork done, and having that CO done. You know, the banks are, they're itchy, but it's all on the contractor, which.
Well, if banks do one thing wrong with it, it's gonna throw a wrench into it all, and that was a good point on the documentation.
Well, the other thing too is like on, on commercial property, I'm assuming there's probably a little bit more inspection necessary, I mean.
The same inspections, it's just that, say, at the school, you might have five, five inspections out there compared to.
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering, 'cause I know.
A lot more thorough.
Yeah, which I totally understand that, so, that's why I'm just trying to gauge what we're.
More complex.
Okay, so, let's do that then, let's, we'll, we'll table any more conversation for now, and we'll just have some more conversations. I'll get with Steve then, and we'll, we'll have some more talk about that, okay?
Sounds good.
Appreciate you coming on here and talking with us tonight. All right, so with that, we go to portfolio reports. Jack, you say you have no report?
I have no report, but I do have one thing, um, in a minute, um. I get looks all the time.
Yeah.
In the minutes we talk, I mentioned Kelly Visto last, uh, meeting and talk about questions, I, I think we need to, uh. If Matea could email us all and have us do a little homework and send in our question for a city survey, I think we should look at. Is that how you wanted to handle that, Cory, I know we talked, state of the city, whatever, how, how do we wanna do that, but let's come up with a plan and do it.
So, so what's the?
Are you afraid of a little law enforcement?
Tying into not only law enforcement, but I think a few other areas, and that's where I think we ended up talking a little bit.
It wouldn't be a single survey, this would just be, we would send out one every so often, but it would be themed, based upon what we're hearing or things like that. Just to get feedback from the residents on different things, and that's why.
Participating, precipitating because of what Kelly brought, or?
Partially, there's been some other kind of. Partially, there's been some other conversations too, and I think that.
It seems like we have a subject come up, you know, whether we hear it privately, or we hear a comment brought up, you know, just to get the feedback from.
Let's engage, how much of an issue is it really, or have I got a few people that are just wound up about something, or is there more to it than that? It'd be just nice to know, you know?
Heard a comment about stone removal, you know, that's another one, you know, what, what do you guys get for calls in the city as well, so we can hopefully smooth things out, you know, get an understanding, educate people, I think it's probably what a lot of it needs to be done, so people understand how we do things.
Well, you never please everyone in terms of stone removal.
No, we know that, we know that.
And yeah, we feel if you call, yes.
Yeah. But, okay, no, I agree, that's, so we should just start doing that, come up with a couple of topics, and we start, and start that conversation, so, okay.
Yeah, have her send out an email with, because we said, have everybody come up with a couple of questions for the survey.
Mm-hmm, but then we can start, we'll just focus that down. Okay. All right, Dave?
Okay, uh, two items, the city administrator position, so we are currently in contract negotiations with Brent right now. Uh, we sent a final version, he has sent back some responses that we need to read through, um, they are doing the, uh, post-screening work, uh, which is including the credit check, working through that, I guess there was something in the agreement on the credit stuff that, uh, he had some questions about, so he, uh, A E two S is working through that with him, so that's where we're at, we're still trying to move forward, trying to get this going, hopefully the goal is, uh, um, try and get everything agreed upon, and then, uh, Corey and I are going to talk, we may need a special meeting to have approval of this, to keep it moving, otherwise we wait until the next meeting for approval, and, um, he is not working, so that is flexible, I guess, but that could affect the April second, or whatever the dates of start, yeah, so.
We'll keep everybody posted this week, I guess, we'll, we'll bring it down with that conversation with him, see what we need to do.
Okay. All right, next one is, uh, city reappraisals, so, uh, upon signing our contract with Cass County to do, um, our assessing, um, job, so any new, uh, uh, buildings, remodels, permits, any of those, they are going to reassess, one of the criteria of that was they would, uh, be having our whole city reviewed, that is gonna be done by Vanguard, um, that did have a contract, that, uh, they would split the cost with us, and they provide us five years, was that correct, Vance, to lay back the, our portion? Um, so.
That took some pressure off.
Yeah, took some pressure off, um, and so, uh, there was a letter sent to us as an example, Sharon did put it in the horse happenings, but there is a letter going to be going out to all property owners of what's going to occur, um, they will start this project hopefully here in, did he say April?
Yes.
Yeah, is it finishing up in Mapleton?
They're in Buffalo, I believe.
Or Buffalo or somewhere, and this will be probably a year-long project for them to review all properties in the city. So we would, that, that letter will be sent out to every homeowner, or property owner, excuse me, property owner that's going to be affected by this appropriate review, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Vance, but we are overdue for this?
I think we have it done.
So we're overdue.
The state is, the state was coming back on us.
Yeah, this has been put off as long as we possibly can. The state coming in and.
Yeah.
Yeah, our options.
We've gotten up to every point except the nasty, nasty one.
Yeah, our options were either we put forth a plan, that say we hired somebody and over X number of years, we would have gotten through this, or, you know, we worked through with Cass County and they stated to take over your assessment, this is the only way we can do it.
The timing, the timing was right on it, because they're doing all the surrounding communities right now, and now is the time, we, if we're gonna do it, we need to jump in, which we already did.
Yep.
And the cost of them doing the assessments in the future is very inexpensive compared to, you know, having somebody on staff, so, it's a very good benefit for us. It's just the downside is every single one of our, yep, every person sitting in this room is going to get.
My, how's it going on?
You knew that was coming.
It's their own group.
Well, they've already been saying about it, so.
Yeah.
They put you at the top of the list for us.
You're the first guy.
Yeah, send them over there first.
I had two permits in a year.
So, yeah, it's not something that happens overnight, and it will take a significant amount of time.
There'll be letters that go out, like you said, to the residents, so everybody will kinda get a heads up as to when and the what.
Yeah, and results could be two or three years out.
Yeah, but it's just, we need to get this going, so we don't get more grumpy grams or something from the state, don't need that.
Spell that.
Grumpy gram, oh yeah, I'll send you an email.
Okay, that's all I, that's all.
Okay, um, okay, Sharon was just gonna, she was just gonna mention about the forestry ordinance, we got that squared away in the landscape thing, so life is good there. Brian is not here, so I don't worry about that, one thing I got on mine is the FM diversion, I got a call last week from A E two S, they would like to come out and give a presentation to us at our next council meeting, by then we should have a better idea where this diversion is gonna lay the, um, we don't know anything much yet, I mean, there's just some scuttlebutt going around, but we'll keep that until we know for sure, so no you starting anything until we know what's going on, but.
Yeah, I ran into Jason Benson at conferences, and he said, it sounded like he'd be up here too with that.
Yeah, so, anyway, they're supposedly on the twelfth is when they're gonna know what this is, um, I'm pretty sure it's gonna affect Horace a little more adversely than what the current alignment is. Conventional wisdom is there, so, we'll have to see what they come up with, but anyway, that's what the plan is next meeting, so make sure that we put that down on our, um, list of things that will be happening, I'd say put that probably at the top of the agenda list right after we approve the agenda, so that they can come in and give our presentation, and we'll see where the rest of the meeting goes, so, that's all I had on there, so.
One thing that Dana and I will be out of town Thursday and Friday, we will put, uh, Facebook messages, we'll change the answering phone message to refer any cars to our cell phones, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's changed because of.
It's much better, it got switched, it was supposed to be today and tomorrow, and it got switched.
Because inclement weather, so.
What is it, this is?
It's a reminder.
Training, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have seen.
So, all right, so is there anything else that needs to be brought up tonight that we missed?
Don't want you to do it during.
Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Corey, I'm gonna put this in my office, you gotta sign it, right?
Yeah, I gotta go through, I'll sign all that stuff tonight.
Just put it here and here, I'll, I got it easy.
And then Vance will sign off that the resolution of, uh, with a lot of this other stuff.
The bonds, tomorrow, tomorrow, John's learning if you come in. Oh, you're not? Oh, so tomorrow?
Okay, other than what we have here. Well, it's definitely, yeah, this is just for my.
Yeah, see, I have to, I have to send that one.
The one I, the one I had.